You all alone tonight?
Yes.
Like the big empty center table, sorry.
Good evening and welcome to the Cape Elizabeth School Board Tuesday, March 12th, 2024 regular business meeting. Could everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item one is adjustments to the agenda. So we do have one adjustment to tonight's agenda. We are going to move item C to the top of our...
Item E.
I'm sorry. I'm, oh my goodness, I circled the wrong thing. Yep.
Nine E. Nine E, yes.
Nine E. We are moving nine E to the top of our new business agenda. Are there any other adjustments?
That's it.
Okay. So item number two, may I have a motion, please?
I approve we approve the regular business meeting minutes from Tuesday, February 13th, 2024.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor? Item three is comments from the public on agenda items. If there are any members of the public that would like to make a comment, I'm going to ask you to please come up to the podium, state your name and address, and keep your comments to about three minutes. Okay, seeing none, moving on. Comments from our student representative.
Hello, everybody. It's just me tonight. Jack is at a swim team banquet. So I hope that you all are having a great march and staying dry from all the rain. Our students at Poncove particularly are having a really great month. They are participating in picture book March Madness, so they're voting on various story books, and then the whole school kind of participates in this bracket. Kindergarten students in particular had a wonderful time visiting with Dr. Record and reading one of the books involved in the March Madness tournament. Last week, Poncove students celebrated the favorite color day, so students got to wear their favorite colors to school, which brought a lot of added joy to the hallways. This week, storyteller Len Cabral is visiting the students and sharing traditional folktales from Africa, Capoeira Day to be specific, and then the Caribbean, so as well as a lot of tales from other countries around the world. And I saw Len Cabral when I was in elementary school, so it's a wonderful tradition that is still going. The fourth graders are beginning to talk about their step up to high school, with a notable moment being their selection of musical instruments to play in fifth grade band. And then on that same note, Jack and I are looking forward to kind of going back to the middle, back to Poncove, excuse me, and chatting with the fourth graders about their transition and meeting with some other grades as well. At the middle school, the middle school band and chorus has been really thriving as we move into what the music department likes to call Music in Our Schools Month, just due to the sheer amount of music events that are occurring. So last week, the CMS band and chorus performed for the fourth graders to kind of show them what music is like at the middle school and welcoming them to participate in band and chorus. And then a few days later, a group of sixth grade band and chorus members performed at the sixth grade North Honors Festival. And further, Cape sent a group of students to the District One Seventh and Eighth Grade Honors Festival, so huge congratulations to all those students who participated. And then I'm serious when we say that March is music month because the eighth grade band is also going to the main band directors association competition where they will be performing and judged based on the band's playing ability and their sight reading. Students have been enjoying a new program piloted in February that we heard about, a little bit about last meeting called Explore Wednesdays, where students have the opportunity to choose from a variety of subjects that are kind of experiential learning based. So during these sessions, students are participating in everything from cooking to tiny house design, which has been super cool. Students also transitioned to new allied arts classes recently and have been having a great time exploring those subjects. And then class selection for next year began today, following the middle schools hosting of eighth grade families for the eighth grade open house last night. And then further, the student council had a really successful food drive for Judy's pantry, and sixth graders had a great time tubing at Sea Coast Adventure, which was a fun activity to kind of finish their trimester. And then finally, on a sports note, the middle school indoor track team has been really popular, popular this year with Cape winning both the boys' and girls' divisions in both of the first two meets. And then moving on to the high school, our one-act play Rosenkreutz and Gilms and Our Dead went to Thornton Academy to compete in the main drama festival regional competition. Two of our actors were recognized as members of the all-festival cast, and the ensemble together was awarded a special commendation, so congratulations to all of them. It was a really, truly fantastic production. The Cape Elizabeth High School Jazz Band will be participating in the annual UNH Jazz Festival on Saturday, where they'll be performing, hearing from guest artists, and learning from guest faculty. You should all hear, come hear them play at the end of the month on March 22nd at the annual CHS Jazz Cabaret, which will also feature the eighth grade jazz band. ELO has been having a really great, strong second semester with multiple students participating in internships. Specifically, we have students working with organizations such as Portland Immigrant Welcome Center and Kelsen Marine Environmental Engineering. Excuse me. Senior Zoe Bergard shared her experience conversing with new Mainers in French, which was super cool, and junior Marta Leary-Forey described her time with Kelsen Marine Environment Engineering as motivating and helpful in solidifying her desire to pursue the path in college, so ELO has still been a really great experience for students. The high school is currently participating in Spirit Week, as you can see by Mr. Springer's cool tie. Today was Tropical Day, yesterday was PJ Day, and then there are a lot more exciting themes to come throughout the rest of the week. And all these festivities will culminate in a pep rally on Friday, followed by a masquerade-themed spring dance. And then our CHS Club Unified Basketball Team is having a really amazing season. Tons of students are really enjoying being part of that team and also coming out to support their peers and their classmates in the games. And then they got some really awesome new headshots taken earlier in the week. And so if next time that you're in the CHS gym, you can check out those. And then continuing on with spring sports, they've begun their signup process and are looking forward to this official start of the season on March 25th. And then finally, kind of looking in the future, a large group of juniors and seniors will be representing Cape at the Maine State Science Fair on March 23rd. So students have been working all year in their biology classes on research projects of their own design, and so they'll be presenting their work to a panel of judges and then sharing with fellow peers at the fair. So that's all that's been going on. It's a busy month, a lot to share.
Wow.
I know.
Yeah, thank you.
Trying to think back to when you started speaking. Thank you so much. We really appreciate how you and Jack have really gotten into all the schools and not just the high school. It's super fun to hear about the fun things going on for the elementary students, the middle school students, and the high school students as well. We really appreciate that.
No, it's...
Thank you so much and for representing all the students and not just certain groups. It's really nice.
I think, and that's what I noticed too, I like hearing that you're going back to Poncove and you're talking to the children and just how you're, you're not just reporting on them, but you're involved in their communities too, which is, I really like.
No, it's been a pleasure to kind of meet with students at the grades and hear how everything's been going. They're all really wonderful, so thank you for helping us expand.
Thank you. So moving on to presentations, I believe Keegan Lathrop is here, the Class B Alpine skiing state champion in Slalom. So I don't know if the ski coach is here, I know Keegan is here, so would you guys like to come up and just say a couple of words about, like, say something about your season and how, just, it's really okay, just come up to the podium. Just say a couple of things about how your season went, and then we're going to ask for a picture and we'll let you off the hook. So head on over to the podium, give us, give us just a, how did the season go? Give us the highlights.
Here we go. So I'm the coach, I'm also Keegan's older brother, that's why I coach mostly, so good year, solid skiing from both Logan and Keegan Schwartz, our top boys, but a lot of camaraderie, bringing back, you know, the fun in skiing, and that's, you know, we did what we had to do. Yeah, well said. The season definitely wasn't, wasn't going to be possible without Devon, because we didn't have a coach at the start of the season, so huge thanks to Devon and our assistant coach, Tim Ratt, he did a great job. But Devon came back, not sure why, but he did. Came back, definitely a fun season, good one to end on, might miss it, but it was definitely fun.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Great job. Thank you.
Come in front. Yep. Tall guys. Yeah. Sorry. Congratulations. Are Isla Litten and Sabina Zimmerman here? Come on up, please. And thank you, Ms. Rubin, for explaining a little bit about this.
I'm going to explain a little bit, I didn't tell them, I told them they didn't have to speak, they're writers, they don't have to speak and read their writing, so. So this fall, eighth grader, one of our eighth grade teachers, Hannah Hyde, challenged her students to write about a teacher who had made an impact on their lives. For the past two years, the Maine County and State Teachers of the Year Association, in partnership with the Maine Council of English Language Arts, has held a student writing contest that showcases the outstanding talent of students and the incredible impact of teachers in Maine. And Dr. Hyde saw an opportunity to put her students' writing into a real-life contest, which was super exciting. And out of it, we got two winners in the sixth to eighth grade writing category of the statewide contest. Our eighth graders, Isla Litten and Sabina Zimmerman. Isla won first place in the sixth to eighth grade writing contest, and I'm going to read just a small excerpt of her piece. "His intricate teaching style could only be described as a tightly woven scarf. On the outside, it's a scarf, like any other, but if you take a close look, really look at the scarf, you'll see the minuscule threads that make it up. You really have to get to know him to see those small threads that make him up." So it was a piece from Isla's, from Isla's writing. And Sabina Zimmerman won an honorable mention for her submission, and I'll read a little excerpt of hers. "I was really young, so I did not understand everything that was happening, but I knew it made me happy. My painting was put on the front page of the local paper. I couldn't have done it without Mrs. Johnson. From then on, there was a confidence in me. I brought the confidence with me but kept it inside. Mrs. Johnson made me feel an inner confidence, and I found art as an outlet. I still loved to draw and paint. Mrs. Johnson changed my life. She showed me that school is not scary, it can be fun. I just need to look at it in a new way. She allowed me to be creative and taught me to believe in myself." And those are some excerpts, and so we're just really proud of the work that Isla and Sabina did, and really grateful that Dr. Hyde gave them this opportunity. So thanks. You guys want to say anything?
Congratulations. No, no. Picture time? Director of CEIF, and Sherry Bragg, Grants Chair. Thank you for joining us tonight.
As Ms. Seifert said, I am Liz McAvoy, Executive Director of the Cape Elizabeth Education Foundation, and I'm actually here tonight both with Sherry Bragg, who is our... And I'm actually here tonight both with Sherry Bragg, who is our Grant Chair, and Eliza Sandals, who is our Board President. So excited to have them there. And we're excited to be here to give you some background information on CEEF for those of you who aren't as familiar with it, as well as to just give you some information about some of our grants that we've done. CEEF was established in 2002 by a group of parents who wanted to support Cape schools by funding innovative initiatives that would otherwise fall outside of the school budget. Their mission was to find ways to enhance educational opportunities across the schools and district and engage community support for the schools as well through the foundation. For 22 years, CEEF has adhered to that mission by funding projects that benefit all three schools. To date, we have funded 336 grants totaling over $1.5 million. Our grants are currently awarded four times a year. We have two dates in the fall and two dates in the spring to coincide with the school's schedule. And we were fortunate enough just last week to have awarded four grants in the first of our spring grant cycles. These grants, recent grants, are a great example of the creativity of Cape educators, and we're excited to tell you a little bit about those. The first grant is one to the five fourth-grade teachers for a residency program by the Telling Room, who will spend 10 weeks in the fourth-grade classrooms, working with students to produce a piece of writing, helping them craft and edit, and ultimately to produce a published book of their work. The students get an opportunity to work with writers and Telling Room volunteers who can help them really learn to craft their writing and really show them that every one of them can be a writer. This is a grant that will take place in the spring of 2025. The second grant is a middle school grant, which went to the fifth-grade team of Heather Geiki and Dave Croft for a gnome village around Cape Elizabeth. So stick with me on this one. This is a project that Mr. Croft actually saw while hiking on Land Trust Trails around Rangeley and thought it was a great way to engage his students. The fifth-grade students will build, create, and decorate gnomes and gnome houses, think like a small birdhouse type of structure, while working in their classrooms and in the art classroom. Each student will also write a poem, a story, or some other narrative piece that will be available by a QR code that will be affixed to the house. The houses are then temporarily installed on Selt trails and even possibly some of the town-owned trails for hikers to enjoy. And as in Rangeley, they are also hoping to produce a punch pass so visitors can keep tracks of which ones they are visiting. We really thought this was an exciting grant because it engages math, creativity, and writing skills, and we love the fact that it's sort of a town-wide collaboration between CEEF, the schools, Selt, and even the town itself, possibly. In fact, we thought so highly of the grant that we made funding available, not just for the Geiki-Croft team, but for the other fifth-grade teams if they wish to participate this spring. The third grant from last week is also a middle school grant, which was awarded to Kaitlin Ramsey and Misty Shabo for sound and visual improvement for band instruction. Because the current band rooms are, were not originally meant to be for that type of instruction, they have encountered some visual and acoustic limitations while working in there. So they worked with Troy Patterson and the Technology Integrators to see what would work for them and what's working at Poncove, and ultimately came to us for funding for, to install two wireless sound systems and a swivel wall-mounted TV so that all students can actually hear and see them in both rooms when they are conducting and teaching, they composed assignments and music up there. So really helping them reach all of their students. The fourth grant was a high school grant to Rob Wheeler, who came to us for funding for an artist in residency by Javon Jackson, who is Director of Jazz Studies at the Hart School of Music at the University of Hartford, and one of the last members of Art Blakey's Jazz Messengers. And if you're a jazz fan, this is really exciting to have him here. Although this grant was awarded to Mr. Wheeler, Mr. Jackson will actually be working with high school and middle school jazz students and participating in the annual Jazz Cabaret. One of the other things that we really liked about this grant is that it's co-funded by HSPA, MSPA, and the High School Music Boosters. We love to see when there's this sort of widespread support for grants and projects. I think that's really great. And so this was one of those that we really liked. These grants all embrace new ways to engage students and represent the time, energy, and caring that Cape educators put into their classes. Hearing about these new grants from educators is really inspiring to us as an organization and as a board. But I also want to share with you, as some background, some of the past grants to highlight the tradition of creative and engaging CEEF projects in Cape schools. At the high school level, this includes funding to establish the Achievement Center as well as Freshman Academy. We've awarded grants to begin a beekeeping club, renovate the teachers' lounge, fund end-of-year trips and activities for the Women's Leadership Academy, and have supported the robotics program from the beginning and as it has expanded across the district. We've also seen an increase in student-led grants come to our board, including Afterthought by Hadley Johnson, which was absolutely amazing, as well as a new study app to be used in the high school, the design and launch of a biofuel rocket, and, well, as the introduction of gender diversity in CPR training by Sophia Toon, who actually just happens to be here, which is a great grant. And CPR training is something that every student at the high school receives. So it was really very timely. It was a great grant. At the middle school, one grant that certainly made an impact was funding to bring artists Rachel and Ryan Adams to work with students to design and paint the mural representing CEMS near the fifth-grade wing. We funded the establishment of a mindfulness director position and have been strong supporters of place and project-based learning for grants, place and project-based learning with grants for aquaculture, podcasting, outdoor classrooms, seventh and eighth-grade work at Turkey Hill Farm, and a series of experiential learning activities and field trips for eighth graders. We funded expanded technology for the CEMS broadcast studio for student news reports. And we also renovated the teachers' lounge, as well as the CEMS underground space used by Erica Marcus and others. And we are certainly excited about the handful of student-led grants that we have gotten from the middle school, and we're really hoping to see more of those come our way as well. It's exciting to see some of the younger students take charge and take the lead on those. At Poncove, we've awarded grants for Natureland at the Poncove Playground, numerous visiting authors and illustrators for workshops or week-long residencies, including the current one by Lynn Cabral, world maps, decodable books for every first-grade classroom, telescopes for a first-grade moon viewing experience, and a mindfulness in the classroom program for teachers. Our grants at each school cover mental health, fine arts, STEM, world language, professional development, and more. CEEF has a tradition of encouraging educators to dream big and then bring us those ideas. And we are certainly looking forward to another 20 years of that happening. These grants are simply just a sampling of those that we have awarded over the past 22 years and some of the work that CEEF has done. We are happy to talk about any and all of them and welcome any questions that you would have.
And I get to jump in. I like to wait. I just want to, I want to thank you. I want to thank everybody that's a part of CEEF. This is an excellent, I mean, it could be going too far, but it feels like just a wonderful partnership.
Yeah.
And we, I believe everybody in this town, I know the school board and the school department just are so grateful-
Oh, thank you.
-for the work that CEEF does. And it is so exciting. I have not heard a lot about student grants, but, I mean, lately it does seem like students are more and more getting involved, and that is really exciting.
It's really exciting. There's some of the most, the presentations we get when the students come are just absolutely inspiring. They're so mature. They really work through the grant application. They have everything lined up, their budgets, what's going to happen. It's incredibly impressive. So we love to see them. And like I said, we have had two or three from the middle school, which is fun to see. So when those younger kids can come up, in fact, I think the mural, although Marguerite worked on that the most, was initially kind of a student idea, and we did have students come in and present part of that with her. So that was really special.
Yeah, thank you so much, and thank you for providing these enriching opportunities.
Oh, thanks. We love it. So we've been excited. Anything else?
No, I just, I'd thank you for coming. I think I'd ask a question about your programming, and it's really because I think you're such an important part of what we do, but we, this is my fifth year now on the board, and I realize I never really heard comprehensively. You hear, obviously, in the reports you do, and sort of anecdotally, if you go to the new, at the beginning of the year, I was at the, when the teachers come back. And so it's nice to hear all that. So as we're crafting budgets and policy, really, it's sort of outside of that, but it really enriches what the schools are offering. And so it's really partnership. So thank you for coming. It was really good to hear all that together in one place.
No, absolutely. Thank you for having us. I think it's great to give you all a little bit more of an idea, a comprehensive idea of what we're doing and kind of an overview, so. Well, thank you. It's been a pleasure. We think it's a great partnership as well. Like I said, we've been here for 22 years, and we're certainly looking forward to doing more of it every year, so.
Say also, and echoing what they say, it's, you know, aware of CEEF, but as you were, you know, giving us a description of the range of projects-
Yep.
-so many of them were like, oh, I had no idea. I had no idea that all of these, the breadth of what you do and how enriching it is for all three levels. And also, as a editorial aside, I love the gnome village idea.
We loved it, too.
I can't wait to see that.
Yeah, you first like a gnome village, and then it's really a neat project, so, which is why we made the decision to expand the funding for that if other fifth-grade teachers want to jump in on that. So it's really a neat project, so, a lot of enthusiasm.
Yep.
Again, I echo everything that-
Then just grab the mic.
I echo what everybody else said, and I wanted to say thank you, but for the public, what is your funding source? What are your different fundraisers that, you know, people might want to contribute to or participate in?
For the most part, we just do, we do an annual appeal and looking for donations from the town. Like you said, we have a very supportive town and supportive of education, so that's been our main fundraising goal. We do an annual golf tournament, which is a fundraiser, and then we do, hopefully by annual, a Cape Elizabeth Kitchen Tour, which we sponsored this past September. So there probably will be another one hopefully in 2025, so we don't do that.
Actually, I have one more question.
Yeah.
What are the, for student grants, what are the amounts that they can request?
The student grants are treated just like every other grant. The process is the same. There's no limit on the amount of grant that can be requested. That's for students or for educators. It's really what do you need and what can we do? And we evaluate theirs with the same criteria as we do any other grant. Yeah, that's neat. Anything else?
We do want a picture with you three, though, if you want to come up. Come on down.
No, it's fine. I'm just gonna-
We don't mind.
I know. I'm gonna go right between Sherry and Liz, and it'll be fine.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for coming, and thank you for your work.
All right, now, all I can think about is the gnome village, but-
I want to know more about that.
I do, too. How do I participate?
The school board can make the gnome.
I want a gnome village, yeah. So I would like to direct the board and public's attention to, we have administrative and staff reports that are included with our packets, and those can be read on people's own time, and we very much appreciate those reports. Next up, we have our business manager's report. Marcia Weeks.
Thank you. Good evening. For the monthly financial report, the percentage of the year that occurred as of February 29th is 67% of the year. The total general fund expenditures amounted to 63% spent. This represents a reasonable expenditure pattern for us at this time. The percentage spent at this time last year was also 63%, and the average for the past seven years was 63. This means now that our expenditure patterns are matching the pre-pandemic numbers, which is also normalizing our historical average. I would like to give an update on the school nutrition program for the month of February. They served 14,117 lunches and 4,905 breakfast meals. The revenue from this state claim for February will be $72,310. This is 7,000 up from last year at this time. We also received an additional $8,353 from the State Department of Education as an additional state grant. We are running slightly behind right now with our expenditures compared to our overall revenues. However, March is the month I'm using to determine our projections for the end of the year, primarily because that is our largest month for the entire year, for every year. And February also had three pay periods, which is throwing the numbers off just slightly for the projections. So at the end of March, I'll be able, a better idea of how we will be by June 30th for school nutrition. Any questions?
Questions? Thank you so much. Next up, we have our superintendent's report.
All right. It's March.
Very marchy.
It's very marchy, but soon enough, it'll be light out when we leave this meeting in a few months. So I just want to thank Sophia again for that great report. That's exciting, all of those things happening in our district, and to hear it from you, from other students, just so exciting. It makes all of this work worth it, to hear that. Extend my thanks to CEEF for their incredible contributions to our schools. All right, in terms of my report, School Building Advisory Committee, continuing an impressive amount of work. That committee has been together for over a year. We meet regularly for communications, for finance, and at least twice a month, if not more, for our big committee. In fact, last Thursday night, we were here till, I think it was 11 o'clock, talking about important things, but we are working, and I really appreciate the five committee members, community members that are part of it, our two school board members and two town counselors that are dedicating hundreds of hours to this. We are making progress, I believe that. Right now, we have three, three different projects or solutions, as I like to call them, that we're looking at. We're hoping, are aiming to get down to one on May 2nd, so that's exciting. We're also working on a new survey, still in the works. When that will go out, what it will entail, we have a lot of work to do on that, but we're working on it. And I'm really pleased the Harriman, the great architects, Lisa and her team, are now back in our schools, meeting with staff, sharing them the progress, sharing them the solutions, and getting their feedback, because after all, it is about our staff and our students. That's why we're doing this. So I'm glad that's happening. So I'm sure Cindy will share more later on, but I think we're really making good progress, and I'm hopeful. Enrollment numbers are steady, very similar to where we were last year, so that's on track. I don't know how, Tiffany, if you can tell me kindergarten enrollment numbers?
At the rate now?
Yeah.
Eighty-seven as of right now, and I believe when we talked, you said that was a little ahead of where we typically are in our budget meeting. So eighty-seven enrolled so far in kindergarten. So we're on track there. We'll keep an eye on enrollment numbers, because obviously that impacts teacher decisions and all that. Otherwise, for me, I'm just immensely proud of all the work of our staff, all that they do every day. A lot of it's hidden. We don't see it. They only, they only know it and do it and make this such a successful district from pre-K all the way through senior year of high school. So a lot to be proud of. So that's my report. Any questions for me?
So we're moving on to new business, but when I ask for a motion, I would like that person to please make the motion of 9E, and then we'll jump back to A. So E would be sabbatical leave. Okay?
Do them in the order that we-
Yeah.
Very sensitive mic tonight. Sorry, everybody. I make a motion to consider, to consider approving the sabbatical leave request of Joanna Payne for the 2024-2025 school year.
Second.
person to please make the motion of 9E, and then we'll jump back to A. So E would be sabbatical leave. Okay?
Do them in the order that we.
Yeah.
Very sensitive mic tonight. Sorry, everybody. I make a motion to consider, to consider approving the sabbatical leave request of Joanna Payne for the 2024-2025 school year.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes. So I can share a little bit about this. The board has been informed about this already and had a chance to meet with Joanna and talk through this. Joanna's been a wonderful teacher at the middle school for several years. She has an interest in studying Wabanaki Studies and developing a curriculum for fifth through eighth grade, designing integrated units that would involve humanities and science and involve the community. She's designed an approach where she is going to be working with experts within our district, including Michael Young, Mark Ash, and Karen Ferry from their schools. She'll be reaching out to museums within the state. She'll be reaching out to universities, other school districts around the state that are well, well-versed at this work. So she's diving in, really, to advance our understanding of Wabanaki Studies and really actually following LD 291, which is a law that says we need to do this. But even if it wasn't a law, it's really important for, to help our students have greater understanding and our staff to have greater understanding of the history here. So I'm fully supportive of this. She would be on sabbatical for next year, and she would come back to us full of knowledge about curriculum instruction and assessment, share that with the staff, regularly work with them, and really advance our work in this area. So I'm excited about this. And Principal Rubin expressed great support as well. So I hope you vote yes on this. Any questions for me?
Seeing none. All those in favor? Thank you, and thank you for being willing to do this work on behalf of the district. So we have, doesn't look like, is there a separate?
There's not a separate item.
I think you'll just kind of reread it, change the name, and I believe it is a half year.
Right. Gosh, I'm sorry. This thing is very aggressive tonight. I'd like to make a motion to consider the approval of the sabbatical, approve the sabbatical leave request of Melissa Bam for half of the 2024-2025 school year.
Sorry about that.
Anybody willing to second?
Thank you.
Three stooges up here.
We had a chance to speak with Melissa Bam this evening, learn more about her proposal. She's been a special educator in Cape for 13 years and an educator for 17, I believe. Really has done a great job for us at Pon Cove. She's really interested in learning more, studying about multi-tiered system of supports. So it's basically, how do we, what supports do we offer students? What sort of structures do we have in place? What kind of screening tools do we use? How do we make a more integrated approach between regular education and special education? So she's collaborated with the Pon Cove principal, Tiffany and Ryan are special services director on designing this. She's planning to really examine what we're doing now, what's working, what could be better, and then really engage with other school districts that have these systems in place, find out what works for them, how does it work. She's going to do a lot of research in terms of reading and studying and really collaborate throughout her sabbatical with leaders in the district so we make sure we're all going in the same direction and we have a great understanding. I think this is a real need for us. We need to improve our systems at Pon Cove, certainly actually K-12 in this area. And I think this will really advance our work. So I'm a full supporter of this, as I know Tiffany and Ryan are as well.
Any questions? All those in favor? Thank you, and thank you for being willing to do this work. All right. Moving backwards before we move forwards. So item 9A, we give everybody a chance to go where we need to be. May I have a motion, please?
I move to approve the 2024-2025 school year calendar.
Second.
All right. Kristen Phil?
All right. I'll share a little bit about the process and give some highlights of the calendar. Building a school calendar sounds easy.
Does it?
No, it doesn't. But it's quite a process. It involves lots of stakeholders, including parents, staff, administrators, school board members, myself, Michelle. And we've met multiple times over the last few months, sought feedback from staff, feedback from parents, got input from the school board in the fall, and really went about, how do we look at what we're doing currently? How do we make some improvements that help students, help staff, and help parents? And any one of you up here would probably design it differently. Any parent would, any teacher would, any superintendent might, right? We all have different views of what we think is important and how to balance it. So it's challenging, it really is. But I think we, we made progress on the calendar, as we have every year I've been here, in meeting the needs of students and staff and parents on when we start the year, what we offer professional developments, and how we try to end the year. So some quick highlights. You'll see it's very, quite similar to this year's calendar. We do believe it provides more consistent weeks for students and staff. You'll particularly see that probably in October and January. So less breakup of the weeks as best we can with holidays, of course. You'll notice there's no early release for fall conferences. That's been moved out of, out of the calendar. You'll also notice that kindergarten screening has also been moved out of the calendar. And I really appreciate the staff and administrators that are going to have to figure some of this out. How do conferences work? How does kindergarten screening work? So I appreciate that, because I know it's not easy, it's not easy to change. You will notice that the eight professional development days are clearly marked on the calendar. We thought that was important, so they're clearly delineated. You'll notice most, most of our days fall on Fridays, but we are trying, February 3rd is a Monday professional development day. That was a suggestion from someone on the committee to try it on Monday, when our teachers are fresh, but still allowing parents and families to have potentially a three-day weekend. So there's a lot I could say about this. I do, one last thing I want to point out. The middle school start time on here has gone from 7:55 to 7:50. That was requested by the middle school administration, and they would end the day at 2:20. So it's the same amount of time. It just allows for them to have home base first thing in the morning before students start regular classes. So that's a quick summary. Phil, you were part of the process. Love to hear your input and answer any questions.
Yeah, thank you. Well, you covered all the highlights, but I, I just want to say a couple of things. First, I thought the process, I really, it was my first year on the calendar committee, and I thought everyone put in the time, and we really worked well together. And it was good to hear everyone's perspective. There was a lot of different perspectives on the board, on the committee. I, just to bring it back to where the board, we had a discussion at a workshop, and we did have a couple of goals, and I think we've accomplished them or made some progress toward those. One was kindergarten screening, which I think had been sort of an experiment in some ways. It only happened for a couple of years, but there was a desire to, to take that time back for our kindergarten students. And, and so you'll see that that, and working with administration, and I know the principal had, was going to work on that, but we will take that time back for the kindergarten students, and that will happen in a different time period. The other, we talked about Election Day, and we have sort of, I guess you'd call it a compromise. And so the, the high school will be in, right? So we left it with remote.
Yeah, the high school's remote on Election Day. K-8 are in person.
That's right. So we, we will have an Election Day, a school day this year. It's just that it's a little different than how it's going to work, because obviously, the election happens at the high school, so we're going to do a remote day. And then finally, we talked about moving conferences out of the school day, again, both to reclaim some, some teaching time, but also, I think, we heard, we did, superintendent did a survey, and it was sort of overwhelmingly from the parent community, and I think even a lot of the staff, actually, depending on the building, supported that concept. So we didn't, we didn't go all the way there this year, but in my view, I think we made some good progress, and we can revisit it next year and see how it goes. So you'll see in the fall, the fall conference is outside. We did keep a half day in the spring, so that's where we landed. So I think we took a step in the direction of what we're hearing from, from the parents and the staff, and, and I think it's always good to see how it works, and we can revisit it next year. But I think it was a good process, and it's a good calendar from my perspective.
Question. Will the earlier start time at the middle school impact the bus schedules?
Yeah, great question. We reviewed that with our transportation director, and they, I believe the buses actually get there at 7:35 with the students, so it fits perfectly, actually. Yep. Good question.
I appreciate looking at these kind of longer blocks where we have uninterrupted weeks. Like you said, October, January, March is always okay, I guess. Great from a teaching perspective, but it's nice to see those long blocks where people can really build some stamina and build some connections.
I didn't mention this, but it's important for the public to know that our calendar has to be within five days of alignment with the other sending schools to PaaS. And that's kind of, that's one of the things that constricts some of our options and our choices. So that was part of it. Also, starting after Labor Day, bringing all students after Labor Day does push us later into June, so we're cognizant of where Juneteenth is and how that works. And this calendar also highlights that the first two, I don't even know if we can call them snow days anymore. The first two weather days will be traditional model, and then after that, we'll move to virtual if, if we can, if conditions allow. So if that. We, we have had no official snow days.
None, wow.
Not yet. Come on, Phil, why just?
Phil.
At a minute, it'll be the latest we'll have one.
Right. And I know if you're looking at this, you know, June 16th on here is the last day for students, and that's on a Monday. But we recognize most years, we will have at least some, some snow, and that will impact the end date. But we, we should finish with students and hopefully staff before Juneteenth, which will be nice.
Thank you both for your work on this, and thank you to everybody who participated on this committee. Are there any further questions or comments? All right, seeing none. All those in favor? Thank you. Everybody will be excited to plan their vacations.
And I do have an explanation sheet that I think is in materials. I'll also get that out to staff and parents and students. It helps explain the calendar, because to me, when I look at this, it all makes sense. But if you're just looking at it the first time, it's probably confusing. So that will be going out as well.
Actually, one more highlight, because it came after our conversation. You'll see that we kept the half day for the fifth and ninth graders. I think that was important. We heard from the building administrators as well. So it wasn't that it was at risk, but we had talked about it. So that, that is still in there.
And that day is when they go into the buildings by themselves.
Right.
To just acclimate.
Right.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Item 9B, may I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to consider the approval of the CEHS Program of Studies for the 2024 to 2025 academic year.
Second.
I think it was Kathleen.
I think it was, Kath.
All right. And we have Principal John Springer.
Good evening.
Give us the highlights and any explanation you would like to give.
Yeah, so you do, you do have the red line version, too, right?
I, we did online. Yep.
Okay.
Here we go. Yep.
Yes. A little bit of a struggle to print. So as always, I mean, I think there's some typical changes in here. I'll highlight a couple of them. Sort of the information near the beginning of the Program of Studies. We've really tried to sort of consolidate sort of where some of this information is. Some have existed, I guess, a little bit in policy. There's an overlap, but there was some in the Beacon, some in the Program of Studies. So you'll see that a number of things have been added in the first pages about sort of SDP projects, early graduation, grade weighting, transcripts. A lot of those things have been added. So where those came from was the Beacon, and then we'll be sort of looking to sort of maybe shrink and consolidate that down. And so that's the major change at the beginning. I'll also note that there was an addition of a note about prerequisites, and, which was a request from the public. So we did include that in there, which hasn't been in either document before. But really, that's a representation of something that is a practice that we already follow. We don't currently waive prerequisites to move from classes that students haven't met. So, but that is an addition, and that has not been in there before. Other additions, of course, you'll see some new classes in there. We talked about the, maybe at the budget meeting. Sophia had talked about the science research, and students right now are sort of doing that in addition to their regular class. And there'll be a science research component to the ELO programming. So they'll do those projects in conjunction with ELO. So they'll be doing their typical ELO process, but also having independent time to do independent research. There's some other new classes. One's actually going on right now. It's sort of piloted this year, which is sort of, sort of a modern take on home ec, I guess, I would say. And there were posters around the high school. So you'll see that in there. There's also some of the new classes we talked about last week, which is sort of the environment and economics. Some of those things are all in there. And then there's, of course, some additional language changes, updates from department chairs, if they're looking to change language around course descriptions. Those are all done by department chairs. One thing we also added in here that hadn't been in here previously is for AP courses and any other courses. We just added a note if there's a fee for the, for the class and for the exam. Of course, we always work to meet families' needs that meet the criteria for us to support them with those. But just to make sure that people are aware that, say, for like a woods class or something, there might be a fee attached to that. So that's in here, which was on here before. Most other things are just sort of clerical changes or punctuation mishaps that were corrected from previous versions. But happy to take any questions as well.
I noticed there were several updates within the computer science classes. And like, for an example, I think it was the intro to computer science.
Hmm.
It's now, or I'm sorry, intro to computer programming was previously computer science principles. Is it still the same class, or is it really a different class?
I mean, for all intensive purposes, I mean, Alex is just updating the language and the title of the class. I mean, like, there are some new classes, like video game design, which is completely new, but just updating some components of the curriculum. And you just felt that was a more appropriate name. But in general, yes, I mean, it's sort of about similar concepts in computer science.
Okay. Thank you.
So I want to thank you. Number one, I appreciate sort of reorganization and adding some information in wherever it may have existed, and even if it was just in kind of institutional. So I, I think it's really nice to have that in there for students. And I appreciate your willingness to stand here and talk to us about it. We need, we need to be able to ask those questions and understand how this works. So thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Any further discussion?
I also think, and I know we had discussed this a little bit in a workshop, I, there was reference to the kind of going to a slow transition to the Latin honors system. Is that mentioned in here? Is that, I don't know if John wanted to comment on that, or if that's something that we did.
A question on Latin honors and.
Yeah, there was a mention of it. I didn't know if we had.
Recognitions.
Thank you. I, I'm recalling what I, I'm trying to find it. The top 10%. Thank you.
Yep. So we're the, just where we are with that and why it's not in here, why it.
Yeah.
So we're in the process of finalizing sort of what our plan is, where we're going to move to for student recognition. And we did debate whether to put it in here or not, but we felt like we should go through the entire process, bring it through policy committee of things that would be in there, before making an assumption that everybody would be fine with those details. with those details. So, it's not in here, we can certainly add it as an addendum afterwards. I just didn't want to be presumptive about questions people may still have, and people feel like a decision's been made without the appropriate input from everyone.
Okay, I think I may have seen an earlier draft. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion, questions? All those in favor? Thank you. All right. Item 9C, may I have a motion, please?
Make a motion, we approve the superintendent's recommendation for administrator contract renewals. Nathan Carpenter, Cape Elizabeth High School Assistant Principal, Sarah Forry-Pedditt, Poncove Elementary School Assistant Principal, Jake Hogovic, Cape Elizabeth Middle School Assistant Principal, Troy Patterson, Educational Technology Director, Sarah Rubin, Cape Elizabeth Middle School Principal, John Springer, Cape Elizabeth High School Principal, and Jeff Thorack, the Athletic Administrator.
Second.
Dr. Recker, could you speak a little bit to this?
Yeah, I'll speak generally. I think Michelle and I talk about this regularly, how proud we are of this team, and how we're really building a strong district leadership team full of great leaders who do a good job in their programs and/or buildings. And, we are moving this district forward, and as Michelle said long ago in her interview, aligning the arrows. And that takes a lot of work, and it's complicated to run schools and run programming in schools, but I'm really proud of this group. So, I absolutely support these people having their contracts renewed.
Can you talk just briefly about why we're doing this right now? And why, you know, why are we doing this separate from the next group?
Yes. The next group are in their first year. So, the people in this group have been here, been in these positions at least two years, or in their second year, so now they'll be on a two-year renewal cycle. So, that's why we're doing it for this group. We're also by statute, we have to inform people whether they're becoming back administrators, whether they're coming back or not by around this time. So, you're coming back. I hope, although they haven't voted yet.
You're coming back.
I was talking to Michelle.
Thank you, just for understanding. All right. Any discussion? I'd like to thank each and every one of these people, and it is a pleasure to work with you, and we appreciate you all very much. All those in favor? Thank you. 9D, may I have a motion, please?
I make a motion, we approve the superintendent's recommendations for administrator contact, contract renewals for the 2024-2025 school year. Ryan Fairchild, Director of Special Services, and Tiffany Carnes, Poncove Elementary School Principal.
Second.
The words I said before, certainly I meant them about these two as well. Hard to believe we're already in March, and they're almost finished their first year, but they've done an incredible job moving the school Poncove forward and special services forward, and I'm so glad they're here with us. So, we support you voting yes on them.
Discussion? I'd like to thank both of you two very much. All those in favor? Thank you. All right, we have done E, so moving to 9F, may I have a motion, please?
I make a motion, we approve the head custodian job description, or updates to the head custodian job description.
Thank you. Dr. Recker?
Yeah, unfortunately, Dave Bagdad couldn't make it this evening, but he brought this to the Building and Grounds Committee, making some updates to this position, to more be in alignment with what we're asking from our head custodian. Really important role organizing these really vital employees. So, this is really designed to outline what we expect from the head custodian, so it's very clear what their job is and what we're asking them to do. So, I support these changes. I think it will make us more effective with this position.
Thank you. Questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
9G, may I have a motion, please?
Move that we approve the removal of policy J.J.H. interrupted study from the policy manual.
Second.
So, this got its first read at our February 13th business meeting. We've not received any comments. Just as a reminder, our proposal was to delete this policy from the policy manual and move it to the high school handbook, the Beacon. The rationale for this is this really is an administrative policy that details how the guidance office communicates with students and family who are considering periods of learning away from or outside of Cape High School.
Questions or discussion?
Just want to clarify, I think you said administrative policy, but I think you intended administrative procedure.
Yes, thank you.
All those in favor? Thank you. Item 9H, may I have a motion, please?
Move to approve policy J.K.F., disciplinary removal of students with disabilities.
Second.
First read of J.K.F. was at our February 13th business meeting. This policy was last reviewed in 2012, and its accompanying procedure that we'll talk about in a minute was last reviewed in 2008. Our Director of Special Education, Ryan Fairchild, has reviewed both of these and confirmed that the policy and the procedure continue to be consistent with current statutory and regulatory requirements. There are no substantive revisions to either, just a change to a legal citation in J.K.F. We did get some public comment and questions about this policy and its impact on students with disabilities, and this gave us a chance to have Ryan come to the policy committee meeting last week, I think, and we had a really good discussion about the, what this, what this policy and accompanying procedure looks like, how it's enacted in the district, what the different elements of making this happen are. And he was able to explain and really help us understand how this policy and the procedure are designed to provide protection for students with disabilities and to ensure equitable access to their education.
Any questions or discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. And item I.
Move to approve procedure J.K.F.R., disciplinary removal of students with disabilities.
Second.
So, as I said, this is the procedure with more substance than the fairly brief policy itself that really explains the detail and what this policy looks like. And this, we had a really helpful and meaningful discussion with Ryan at our meeting last week, which I think helped us all understand it much better.
Thank you, and I appreciate, I understand that procedures don't typically go through first read and second read, and having seen the comments from the public, the policy is, like you said, it's very brief, and it might, it could be easily misunderstood. And so, reading procedure and then kind of processing through, and I imagine, I can imagine how Ryan talked about it, which is, it really is very protective of students and, you know, if this, then that, and very, very careful. So, one thing I did have a discussion with Superintendent Recker about, and this is going to be my apology to Ryan, because I'm not an administrator, but I suggested that maybe we want to think about when people initially come into special education, that they either receive a list with links or a packet of policies just so they know that these policies exist. A lot of parents who aren't on school board or don't really even know what the policies are, where they are, that sort of thing, and I think sometimes a little, a little work upfront can, you know, enhance communication, enhance relationship, and then maybe save difficulty later on. So, it was a thought, not to add extra work, but it might help. Because it felt like there were a couple of parents who were just like, we didn't even know this existed, and it's sort of like, I hear that a lot, and it's not just about special ed, so. My two cents. Thank you. All those in favor? Thank you.
All right, and first read policies, no vote.
Yep, short and sweet on first read. Policy J.L.C.E.A., managing students with food allergies. This was last reviewed in 2005, and the update that you'll see here is language that was proposed by our school nurses regarding patient, apparent communication with school nurses on student allergy plans.
Any comments or questions from the board at this time? You can always send an email before the next policy committee meeting. All right. So, item 10 is school board agenda requests. Requests can be made through myself or the superintendent. Email is the best. Moving on to committee reports. PaaS, so interestingly, PaaS met twice before our last meeting and zero times before this meeting, so nothing to say yet. PaaS will meet later this week. Technology Committee, Heather is not with us tonight, and kind of look out to, I don't know if they've met recently. Great, thank you.
The technology committee will be meeting soon, that is the update. I don't know if the mics picked you up, that's all.
And then S.B.A.C., Cindy.
We've met. I think we've met enough to cover PaaS and the technology committee and all the... You know, I mean, I'll just expand a little bit on what Chris has already said. Yes, we've all been busy. We are at a stage where Harriman has, well, the committee has narrowed potential solutions for the school needs down to three options. There are two that are levels of renovation, and then one would be, include a new middle school with some level of renovation potentially to the elementary school. We're in a phase right now where Harriman's really kind of working out what those options will look like, and also calculating, having estimates for the cost. And from the communications committee perspective, we're really working on, focusing on addressing, you know, letting the public know about what the needs are in the schools and how each option is a solution for those needs, or what, what things are solved by each option that we're presenting. We hope to also schedule some school tours in the spring so that we can get the public into the buildings to really see and understand what we're talking about. And then the finance committee has been very busy as well, working to understand the tax impacts for each, each option, as well as different, they're working with Matt and the town finance team on kind of overall capital improvement planning, and then they're looking into things like grant opportunities, rebates for different types of energy use and things like that. So, they're doing a lot of hard work there. And our goal is really to pull all of that research and information together by the time we are presenting the three options to the public, so that when, we have a public forum on April 4th, where those three options will be presented to the public, and by that time, we hope to have, you know, kind of a comprehensive view of each. We'll understand what it will look like, what issues it addresses, kind of the benefit of each, and an understanding of the cost of each.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add, I think they also wanted to schedule, the architects have talked about trying to schedule a time to come and present to you all, the rest of the school board, about the work they've been doing. Sorry if you said that, and I didn't, I was trying to listen for it. So, I think they're also going to be trying to do that same briefing to town council to make sure that both of the voting boards are just as, just as familiar with everything as those of us who have been in the meetings are.
Thanks for that, and I think one option we considered is actually, we have joint workshops scheduled already for budget and potentially piggybacking on that.
I think the intent there is to inform the school board and town council about the options, but not really a rich discussion between the two, because obviously, the people that really know right now are S.B.A.C. members, and you're all just learning. So, I think it's more of an information night.
Great, thank you both. So, Buildings and Grounds, so Jen and myself represent the board for Buildings and Grounds. We met at the, we keep bouncing around to different places. We were at the middle school library last time, and Dave Bagdad gave us a pretty exciting update about the security vestibule at a Poncove, which seems like the best solution that we can have right now. And so, it, and I don't know, at the time, it wasn't fully operational yet. It sounds like I'm talking about the Death Start, it is not fully operational. But, so hopefully going forward, that is, involving, I feel like it still lets in the light and lots of visibility and that sort of thing, and allows for that sort of, you know, airlock experience, where you're not just going in there and being...
I'll stress, it's an improvement, but it's certainly not how we would design a new school today. There are still many more improvements that we hope to make.
There's still no direct visibility from the main office. You're still pretty far away from interacting with an adult.
It's an improvement.
It's an improvement, and I appreciated that. He updated us on our HVAC, what are the rooftop units?
Yes.
And kind of spoke at length particularly about the Poncove and middle school rooftop units, which all are, what did he say, 30 years old?
30 years old.
30 or more, okay. And that they are no longer manufactured, they are no longer supported, and anytime there is a problem with one of those, there's this, you know, okay, is there someone who can literally fabricate, right? Because they're not supported anymore, so someone, somewhere has to fabricate the part and then come try to fix it, but then the rest of the unit is still 30 years old. Or do we, you know, and that's its own expense and tricky calculus, and then, or do we replace that unit when they're all past their lifespan? So, yet another kind of really important project waiting to see where we go. But, on the good news side of things, he did highlight that S.R.R.F. monies are out there, and that's a school revolving renovation fund at the state level, which he talked about HVAC things being usually tier one, and so if there's, you know, if there's like perhaps a new building, but one building is getting renovated, there, you know, there's grant funding, so it was, it felt hopeful, is what I'm going to say. And I don't know if I missed anything, Jen?
The bathrooms. The bathrooms at the high school need some help, right? And if we were to build a new school, we might not build bathrooms the same way that they were built when the school was originally built. And he has worked tirelessly trying to find the best way to make our current bathrooms more equitable, looking through do-it-yourself stuff here at the high, like here in district, and also what opportunities are out there, and he's continuing to look at that and how we can best meet the needs of our students, and having more privacy in those bathrooms. And I think that was the other big thing that he...
Yeah, it was. Thank you. All right.
That's good.
That's it for Buildings and Grounds. Announcements of upcoming meetings. So, PaaS is this week, on Thursday.
SBA, Communication Subcommittee, is that, I just always check to make sure that's happening.
Every Thursday, 8:30 a.m.
So I'm just going to say every Thursday at 8:30 a.m. And then we have, it looks like regular SBA on March 14th at 6:30.
Correct.
Just, I like to double check. I'm going to skip down to the School Board Budget Workshop on March 26th at 6:30 p.m. in the high school library. Budget workshops are the best. You need to come. It's good times and good snacks. And I, this is grayed out, so I'm not sure, is that...
I think we're not sure if that's happening.
Okay, so possibly SBA finance, but also possibly not. Policy Committee on March 28th at 4:15 p.m. in the Assistant Superintendent's Office. Is that correct? All right. And then Regular School Building Advisory Committee on March 28th, 6:30 p.m. right here. We have what could be our final, if needed, School Board Budget Workshop on April 2nd, if needed, at 6:30 p.m. in the library at the high school. And then we have the aforementioned SBA Community Forum with a Hareman Architects presentation about the three preferred options on April 4th, right here in Town Hall at 6:00 p.m. The other, the first presentation was very well attended, and I hope to see that many or more townspeople.
Looking at this, thank you, Caitlin and Cynthia, yourself as well, Dr. Recker, for all that you do for SBA, because that's a lot of meetings.
It's a lot.
Yeah, one more quick update on SBA, too. We will be starting to get more information into the Cape Courier. So people should be watching their couriers for more updates on the project and what's happening.
Great. Thank you. Item 13, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to adjourn.
Didn't have to wait on that second. All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you all.